Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Today is Thursday, December the 5th, 2019. We appreciate your attendance. To my fellow board members, I've had a request that people have a little trouble hearing you talk, so talk into your microphones if you would please today when you speak, so I appreciate that. We'll start out with some unfinished business presentation of revised Dawson County Employee Handbook, which was originally presented at the October 3rd, 2019 work session and again at the November 21st work session following legal review. So we'll turn that over to our county attorney, Ms. Davis.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. After the last presentation, I believe the primary issue that was in our discussion and of concern were how some of these new leave provisions would impact the county financially. And so to my understanding, I think Vicki and her team was going to run some numbers. I haven't seen those and I don't know if we have those. But I might just turn it to Vicki to let her present that and Brad to share those impact numbers.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners.
Thank you.
Let's see, I guess first off we start by talking about the leave buyback issue that was in there. When I calculated this at the end of 2018, our leave liability was $924,000. If I look at it today and I include all the sick leave and the personal leave, it comes up to $1,255,000. So that's a $331,000 increase by adding on sick leave. From what I can tell, this is my best estimate, is that the change, if you implement this, the change in liability will be somewhere between 35% and 50%. So that'll put it at either 1.6 million or up to 1.8 million. So there's so many variables that go along with this. You don't know who's gonna, who's gonna take leave, who's gonna go out.
What's gonna happen?
Yeah, so I mean, there's a lot of different variables about this. Also, is the leave buyback.
Clarification, it'll be 30 to 60% higher, so it'll be, we take the 1.255 and we multiply that 1.3, zero, or 1.6.
Yeah, either 35% or 50%, up from 35 to 50%.
35 to 50. Oh, okay.
And Vicki, if I can just clarify, when you say sick leave and PTO together, that's what's how we're merging the two?
Yes, yes.
And that would be calculating everybody taking every available hour?
Yes, yes. Because what happens is at the end of each fiscal year, we have to go through this whole thing where you take all balances of leave and that's booked as a liability on your financial statements. It's not a budgeted item, but it impacts your financial statements and your balance sheet. And so in turn, it impacts your fund balance. Because your fund balance is the difference between your assets and your liabilities. The other issue with the leave is, okay, if everything, and I kind of took the worst-case scenario on this too. If you do the leave buyback, if you say that everybody did the leave buyback, it would cost in the neighborhood of $300,000. Now, I know that not everybody is gonna do that, but it'd be pretty close. If everybody did it, it'd be right at $300,000 per year. And that would have to be budgeted because that would be in addition to their normal salaries.
Questions for Vicki or Brad?
So if we, we have an employee that comes up, and this might be a Brad question more than anything. We have an employee that comes up towards the end of the year and there's a substantial amount of time that they have taken and then they kind of squeeze it in to try to take it towards the end of the year or whatnot, then there is a non-monetary cost on work, there's work cost, a work staffing cost, I guess is a better way to put that. Is there a way to understand and monetize what, if we have a person that's out because they're taking their leave or whatnot, every department probably varies, but you might have to backfill that role with somebody else that may cause force overtime issues, particularly in the fire EMS and sheriff department, I would assume. Is there a way to get our head wrapped around what those, and this is such a big thing that we're looking at and a lot of unknowns, but is there any way to kind of come up with a rough idea of what impact that would have? I mean, that's what we have now, that this buyback would lessen those people potentially being out. So you're telling me it's a $300,000 cost to install the buyback, but what's our cost that we have now for somebody that's out of their job position for a day? Then we're having to backfill it with somebody else. Does that make sense?
It does. I see what you're saying. I think we'd have to look at historical data, last year, you know, come up with a timeframe and when people left and what department. And again, as you mentioned, based on the department's salary that made it in.
Yeah.
Most of the backfill that we could have would be in public safety because we're not really backfilling anybody else's positions. As we, you know, public safety is obviously a situation where you can't go without a person. So we're backfilling those for sure with part-timers or people working overtime, yeah.
I mean, there's a cost associated with the process that we have now.
Right.
So the leave buyback potentially, your high-level mark is the $300,000, but there's still built-in costs that we're not including to get to 300,000, I guess is what I'm trying to get my head wrapped around.
It's kind of hard to quantify. It is very hard to quantify.
One of the things that you would be able to look at, obviously, is you already have overtime costs and those overtime costs are associated in the current budget that you already have anyway because you are used to backfilling when people are off on their regular vacation days and sick days when it comes to public safety. And like Vicki's offices, if Natalie is out, there's no backfilling. You know, Vicki just takes care of whatever Natalie needed to do that day and somebody else has to do it. And the same thing in all the other offices that would be associated in this floor of the courthouse. So those would be pretty easy numbers to see in reference to overtime and stuff like that because that's built into the budget currently as far as what it's costing you to backfill that.
Would, I mean, would the leave, would the leave buyback reduce our overtime potential? In theory, based on a scenario, it could.
It could easily, it could easily because if somebody decided that, you know, I'm gonna not take a day off and I want to save that for Christmas and use that for Christmas present bond, yes, you could have that scenario where that person says, no, 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 take those two shifts off that I normally would have took off.
Right.
And so, yeah, you could, you could see it work both ways.
I've seen it work the opposite way where they had, they were able to sell back their leave time and then corporations took that away from them. And at the end of the year, everybody was scrambling to take their time before they lose it. So I think what we're saying here is if they're able to sell it back, yeah, Christmas present.
And you're absolutely right. We've been down that road here. We did that one time before where we had a buyback program and then we took it away and then we wound up scrambling to everybody take off at the same time. Or we wind up with a situation in public safety to where their manpower shortage didn't allow the chief to allow somebody to be off, so that person runs into the situation of having more hours than the county's allowing him to carry over and have to ask for some kind of special privilege or actually lose that time. Because I could tell you in public safety, there was a lot of times that I just lost time and I know this man just lost time because there was no way to take off to accumulate all that. So, and so basically you just wind up losing some of that stuff. So like you said, there's about five million things that could happen in each of these scenarios to make it work, so.
Other than those two areas, are there any other financial impacts to the changes that were presented or proposed changes?
No, that was not the main, the main issue I felt like we need to look at.
The only other thing that I would offer Commissioner Gaines is the paid family leave was a new concept that was included and so that's a new benefit, but I don't know how we can estimate that because, but that is a new pay liability that we've never had before, which was the up to four consecutive weeks at 60% of regular pay, one time a year. So that is something that it would be possible to quantify probably because we would just be guessing. But that would be one more financial impact if you leave that provision in.
Some people would look at historical and see, I mean, you look at the long enough time here and you'll get an average of the number of people that would have taken advantage of that if we look back 15 years.
And that paid family leave, if you recall, it says detailed on page 94. It relates to the time off to bond for a care for a child. So there may be some averages there or a look at the workforce in terms of gender and age and you could come up with some kind of guess on that. But that's the only thing, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that that would have a financial impact that may be difficult to estimate.
Ms. Vicki, would you have to book that in some form or fashion to show?
No, because if they're getting 60% of their pay, see, their pay's already budgeted. So the impact would be.
Lost time.
Lost time, lost productivity, and you have to get someone else to fill in for it. That would be the impact of that.
I'd like to know, Ms. Davis, the counties you work with, how many counties are doing programs like this?
Well, I can't tell you one right off that is, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they aren't. It's not one that I can, I can't pinpoint one that's doing paid family leave. I think it's still a fairly new concept. And I think as, you know, pay rates and compression and pay studies are being done, I am seeing governments go to look at more creative ways to benefit their employees. And so I think this is something that's becoming new and talked about, just like we are doing some of the things that we're doing here about offering PTO and legal raises when those aren't available from a budgetary standpoint. So I can't tell you right off, and I apologize Commissioner Nix, of any other county that's doing it, but I don't want that to be construed to mean that nobody is. Because I think other counties are also offering other different types of, they're trying to get creative in ways to benefit employees and increase retention, particularly in some areas like, you know, EMS and public safety because of just shortage of workforce.
But you can't think of any about the leave buyback?
Oh, the leave buyback, I think that's not terribly uncommon. Yeah, I think that's pretty common. I'm so sorry, Commissioner, I thought you meant the paid family leave. Because the paid family leave, though, I'm not as used to seeing, but.
Because it's so new.
Yes, but the buyback, I see that pretty often. I think that's fairly common. You know, when you think of it from a liability perspective, most policies will give some opportunity for a buyback if you resign into standing up to a certain number. So while it may not be booked, I don't know how you would book that, you know, in a county way, but it could still be a liability if they're continuing to carry it over. So in some ways, there's more of a certainty of when it gets flushed out as opposed to an employee being able to carry it for years and then ultimately buy out or have it applied to retirement or something.
In the past, what's happened is depending upon the type of employee, if you're an 80-hour employee, 84-hour employee, 96-hour employee, you could, you could collect so many hours at the end of the year and then anything over that you would lose. So this would increase, this new policy would increase the amount that you would have to carry over, or you'd be allowed to carry over.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I mentioned earlier, I'm gonna excuse myself, my partner Crystal will just go to the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on. Next up, we have a presentation of sale of across the 300 acres on Dawson Forest Road, Edward Water and Sewer Authority General Manager Brooke Anderson. Brooke?
Good afternoon. Thank y'all for allowing us to come and talk to you a little bit this evening about the sale of 300 acres off of Dawson Forest Road. This is a process that we've been working on for quite a while. And so we, kind of to give you a little bit of background, we've been working on this, we've researed the property for, for the density and the type of development that we had talked about. And so we started marketing the property. The marketing of the property went out, that was done by Norton Commercial Group. And so there were 14 developers that were, that the property was presented to, that showed interest in the property. And so we presented it to 14. We invited, we had two weeks of time to allow folks to come out and inspect the property, look at it. We had six folks come out and inspect the property and review it and make sure that they could do something with it based on the zoning that we have approved. And ultimately, on October 15th, we received four proposals for the property. And we received a proposal from Smith-Dublin, Polte, Piedmont Residential, and D.R. Horton, were the four folks that we presented the proposal to. Under the intergovernmental agreements that we, that the authority had with the county concerning the disposition of this property, we had set a floor of $3 million for, that we were not except to bid below $3 million for the sale of the property. Based on that, Polte and Smith-Dublin's proposal were satisfied because they did not meet that floor. And so that left us for two proposals. D.R. Horton, Piedmont gave us a proposal of $3,168,000. And D.R. Horton gave us a proposal of $3,400,000. We reviewed D.R. Horton's proposal, primarily looking not only at the price, at the type of product that they were proposing. And they are bringing in kind of a second or third home product that they're proposing for this property. This is the type of development that they are currently building on Dot Ramlet Road in Forsyth County. There's a, and the, it's called Ramlet Grove, I believe was the name of that development. And the price point of the homes that they're looking at is $300,000 to $350,000 price point of the homes that they are proposing for this development. They are, the amenities would include a pool as well as they're proposing a water park feature for the residents there. And some of those basic amenity features that they have down there are other developments. The proposal that they have done appears to be very good. We've reviewed the contract and the contract is kind of tied to the type of development that they're proposing. So everything is connected together as we move forward. We presented this proposal to our board director earlier this month, or excuse me, November. And our board did approve moving forward with D.R. Horton's proposal of $3.44 million for the property. If this board commissioners approves this proposal, then we would enter into a contract with D.R. Horton later this month, which would start the clock ticking. The outside window, we hope to beat this, but the outside window would be closing by September of next year. It should be hopefully sooner than that, but we can't commit until we, they've had a chance to do their due diligence. We will not be able to close until a land disturbance permit is obtained for their project. So that's kind of the key point, that we'll close within 30 days of that issued for the land disturbance permit, which means that they have to do the surveying, engineering, and plan review and plan approval, just as any other development would have to do so. So love to answer any questions that you might have. Ultimately, we are asking for county commissioners concurrent of this proposal for D.R. Horton to sell the property to them for $3.44 million.
Questions for Brooke?
I just was able to pull up the one you mentioned there, the Ramlet Grove, and it appears that it's, yeah, appears that it's like a Craftsman-style product and which I think is really what we would look for in our.
I think they had provided some, some features. There's a lot of diversity in the front and the floor plan, so it's not the same product over and over. And I think it's based on what I saw when I went to Dot, when I went to Dot Ramlet and looked in there and based on the renderings and the floor plans, it appears to be a high-quality development.
And I guess, you know, I'm just thinking about the inventory that's in Dawson County now. There's not that I can think of a neighborhood that's in that price point, is that?
No, there's not, not that I'm aware of. And you've got Infilly and Currie in Chesta T., which is in that range, maybe slightly higher. And then you've got a development in Gold Creek that may be in a similar price point but has a new hall development. This is the first one I've seen that it moved out of the 2000 range into that 3000.
300,000.
300,000, thank you, 300,000 range.
What do you want to add?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Other questions for Brooke?
Is there any feedback from your board on the proposals that we received?
No, they, they were glad we were able to receive the proposal. We were glad we had two to choose from. And, you know, we had good interest, it's just there's a lot of folks doing a lot of things. So, and it's a great piece of property and I think it'd do well.
Other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a presentation of FY 2020 Public Defender Intergovernmental Agreement between Dawson and Hall County, Public Defender Brad Moore. Brad?
Yes, sir. Left child pic is on our office, I feel like old woman Hubbard. It's kind of your children's food a little bit, so there you go. I thought I'd have bitches last time I was up here, but apparently I didn't know when to get it signed. This is the intergovernmental agreement we've had ever since we started between Hall County and Dawson County and it's for one investigator and one lawyer. You were paying for half investigator and half a lawyer. They're Hall County employees and you pay quarterly, I think $20,000. So it's the same money you've had, they fill by, basically. So, do you have any questions?
Questions for Brad? This is something that we budgeted for in the 2020 budget?
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
Any changes, are there? Just the same thing?
Yeah, it's the same as, well, it might have gone up percentage from something just because of insurance and all that, it's the same contract as that since we started.
Other questions? Thank you, sir. Next up, we have a presentation of Family Connection Fiscal Agent Request, Family Connection Coordinator Nancy Stotts. Nancy?
Good afternoon. I'm here to ask that Dawson County Government continue as fiscal agent since 2000, excuse me, 2020. We appreciate so much the work that you've done in being our fiscal agent since 1999 and would like to continue to have you help us with that. And if that's approved, we'd like to be able to submit our two grants throughout the year and have the chairman's signature on that. If there's ever any matching funds required for a grant, we would of course come here for you before submitting.
Questions for Nancy? Keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Next up, we have a presentation of Zen City Technology Platform Proposal, Public Relations Specialist Laura Fulcher and Planning Director Jameson Kenny. Whoever wants to go first, can you go first?
While she's, while she's working on that, I will say that, you know, we are always looking for new technologies to explore, to help us. We are often limited by our capabilities of staff and other things, and especially in the planning department as well as throughout the rest of the county. We try to implement as much technology as possible because we know we can do more with less when it comes to things like this. Zen City in itself is what we have as we have a struggle right now with everybody, even local governments, big governments, even private corporations with what we call as big data. We have over a billion connections of phones, computers, tablets. There's a lot of information out there and a lot of things to process. And so we look at ways that we can help utilize our resources that we already have with other types of technology that can help us process that data and analyze it faster and quicker so we can get things out to our citizens. Because everything we do is with our citizens in mind.
I apologize, it's working the full kit here.
Speaking of technology.
Yeah, I was hoping I could say, but it didn't work out so well.
Chairman, can I add one thing?
Yes, sir.
Beginning of this hour was the ICNA conference that went to, which is the International County Mayor's Association. And the majority of that seminar was on technology and how it's affecting local government and what's taking place. And the actual changes is that it's actually forcing county governments, local governments, to have to move towards in order to keep up. And so that being said, that was one of the premises behind this and to look at and find new ways that we at least need to be aware of, if not that actually move forward on it, to be at least aware of and know it's out there. So that was one of the premises behind this.
Why is it not called Zen County?
Very true, because most of what they were working with was municipal cities.
See, yeah, but it was referenced all through this. What about us, it's not a city?
County government, because they were smaller.
All right, well, thank you very much. So about Zen City. So Zen City collects data from pretty much anything with a digital screen. So that could be social media, local media.
Let's speak up to them.
Is that better?
Yeah.
So contact forms, applications, really anything that's public information that's on the internet. They will anonymize this data, so they will take away any personal information. There's no names, there's no addresses, there's no personal information whatsoever that we would be seeing from any information that they provide to us. But this does help counties to connect with their residents and it helps to increase trust between the county and the citizens. It can help us to control the storytelling and the message strategies that we are trying to put out to the citizens. And it also can help when there's misinformation that has been put out, so we can kind of get ahead of some of these stories that are put out on Facebook or Instagram, whatever, and clarify some of this information. All data that is collected from Zen City is owned by Dawson County, so we have access to all of that. to all of that. Zen City has been doing business in the U.S. for two years, they were founded in 2015, and they have approximately fifty employees. So, so what Zen City uses? So they use differentiating technology with unique attributes. And so what this has is they have a classification algorithm that is trained to recognize different topics pertaining to county management, and this would be, you know, public works, planning and development, elections, anything that's going to be a trending topic for us. It could be zonings, it could be any type of development that's going in. This does not require a keyword list from us, so the data that they are looking at is actually what citizens are typing, it is the actual topics that they are concerned with, so that's what we would be getting the feedback on, and I've got samples of reports that you'll see during just a second. So the relevant data that they would be pulling, they sift through as much of that as necessary, they can classify this according to topics of interest that we are looking at, and they filter out the spam and the irrelevant data. So all of that equals more relevant data for us to look at and to take into consideration on decisions. So they also have a local government-specific sentiment analyzer. And what this is, this highlights the positive or negative feedback about the county rather than the general sentiment and conversations. So, for example, if the conversation is about traffic, that's typically always a negative conversation. Well, instead of highlighting just that, this is going to highlight the negative sentiment expressed towards the city. So instead of just traffic in general, it would highlight a specific intersection, or just that specific area, not just overall general traffic. So again, that makes the insights delivered more actionable on the county's part, so we can be more proactive in looking at this versus being reactive, and so we can get out and see what we can do to help that situation. So. So the analysis of data sources that they cover, again, we can see all this data pulled together as one report, or we can sort it individually by source, so we can sort it by specific social media, Facebook or Twitter, however we want to see it. They also will have an automatic process built in that will pick up on new relevant data sources, such as new Twitter hashtags or new Facebook pages that are created. They also have a geolocation technology, and so with this, they can geolocate up to forty to fifty percent of data, more data, in comparison to the three to five percent of data on social media. So that helps us to understand where the citizen feedback is coming from, so it will help us if it's from the news media, if it's from social media, and if it is from social media, which platform that's mostly coming from. That also will get into the maps that they can provide to us, that will show us more of an overall view and picture point, and Jameson can actually talk more about the maps that they provide to us.
Absolutely, I like maps. You know, they have several different types of maps listed up there, topic map, heat map, basically what we'll be able to do with this is take all these social media feeds, and even the news feeds that are out there, and kind of sort them on a map inside the country, like a heat map, so you can see, for instance, an example, one thing that's probably about to look like it's on fire, it's going to be Dawson Forest and Highway Nine, when they start putting those double roundabouts, because any time you have construction, you slow down traffic, you have complaints, right? But what we'd be, we would be able to do and relay that to the commissioners and say, hey, District Four, these are the biggest areas in which people are complaining, or, you know, all over the county, and we can actually locate these in time to a location, time to a park, or time to something that we can actually go in and be proactive and get ahead of these situations.
And then the last thing that they talk about is their privacy and security, and so that's something they are very serious about. They do not keep names of specific residents in their data. They only collect public and open data, which is what residents have already gone out on public open forums and willingly put out there. So any open chat room or any open Facebook page, that's public information, anybody can see that.
All right, stop it, let me ask you a quick question, so. Because essentially, somebody could come to this podium and tell us how they feel, or they're sharing it in a public forum, and this is the digital version of them being here, sharing what they issued.
That is exactly right. So we call that the silent majority, and that's giving a voice to the people that cannot attend the meetings, and so we would be able to see what they are saying and how they are feeling on certain topics. So I have reached out to a couple of our counterparts that are using Zen City currently. Savannah, Georgia is using them, and they, they rave about them, they don't have enough nice things to say. They've been using them for about a year. They have monitored specific issues with everything from public information, and that they have seen that nothing has come through from private pages, they received no private information. But one of the things that they really liked about using Zen City is they had an issue come up with what they call quad bikes. I don't know if you're familiar with these, but it's the bicycles that people ride around that are to, like a bar where people can drink and ride around, and ride around on a bicycle.
What?
It's about like, I don't know why they call it quad bikes, it's about twenty people on a bicycle, but it's a mobile bar. So downtown residents, yeah, wanted these banned, because they were loud and rowdy, and at nighttime it was causing disturbance. And so the city council wanted more information on what was going on with this. So they were able to actually pull some of the insights from Zen City, and they actually realized that a lot of people wanted to keep the quad bikes because of the tourism and because of the money that it was bringing into the city. With that, they were able to use it more as a mediating tool, and get together with the downtown residents, get together with the quad bike owner, and come up with a compromise, okay? Don't go to these streets, stop by this time, and it worked out where they could, it was a win-win situation. But without Zen City, you would not have known that, because the people that are for the quad bikes weren't showing up to meetings, they weren't being heard, so that gave them a voice, basically.
They probably had a hangover. Why is it called Zen? Because I think every time, you're making me think of Las Vegas.
I know.
All I hear is Zen City, Zen, what is that, what Zen, what kind of?
Zen Garden, it seems.
Yeah, that's what, I think they're getting in touch with you.
I think Zen is actually another word for like community, peace.
That's why I hear is Zen City.
I'm not entirely sure why I follow Zen City.
I know there's a reason.
There is, I like it, I like that word.
Yeah.
They also had another issue that came up in September when they had a hurricane. They actually had some trees and some downed power lines that had not been reported yet. They were running reports, and they were actually able to get that information over to some of the work, and to get that to the departments that needed it quicker, and to get those areas cleaned up faster for the residents. But again, they would not have known this, because it's on so many different sites.
Yeah, often even with county enforcement, we don't realize these issues until someone calls us and complains. This would give us a, you know, if there was a page out there where people were complaining about a dog turning a barge or something, we would actually have that information, be able to proactively go out there and address these issues maybe sooner than people who, they don't know sometimes, to actually call the county, that we have these services available too.
And so I did ask, you know, what their thoughts are on Zen City, if they recommend it, you know, would they be renewing, would they be keeping up with this? Got a resounding yes, because they, it's a very easy-to-use platform, and it has an extremely responsive staff. If at any time they need to get in touch with them, they have a dedicated staff member that, you know, emails, calls, they have weekly conference calls set up, so they've been very impressed and very pleased with them. On the right, you'll see a report that they actually, that's a topic-specific report they had asked for, and this was on a new arena that they were having built in Savannah. And this is showing pretty much that, you know, they weren't very happy about it, you know, that the residents were, it was negative, that the sentiment had decreased four times less, so it was showing that with everything that was going on, it gave them the insight that the negative comments had started decreasing as the arena was being built, they were seeing more positive comments coming about as the residents were seeing the change. And so that, again, is something that you don't necessarily see from all of the platforms. And so it breaks it down for you, you know, it says on here, I don't know if people can read that, but it says the positive sentiment also decreased slightly from fifteen percent to eleven percent, but it means overall the neutral sentiment towards the arena has doubled, so it's starting to equal out. And so that's just giving you some good feedback that you can take on some of your larger projects. So on some of what the other counterparts have been saying, so I talked with Peach B. Corners, Ms. Judy Putnam, she is their communications director, they've been using Zen City for about six months, and she just thinks it's a great way to pull all of this data together, and that's what they've been using it for. She says it's a nice way to pull everything in one nice neat package with all of the trending topics and statistics. We do have two very short videos for you to see, they're from some mayors, they're like one-minute videos that should hopefully pull up, let's see.
Resident engagement is extremely important to government, without knowing what people want, thinking and worried about, talking about, discussing with their fingers and with their mouths, it's very important to know what's going on, and, you know, Zen City has been the guy that's given that information most quickly, once it was tickled and they were able to sign up for the project over a year ago, and it's working very well, and big support, because it lets us stay tuned into what people are talking about. We can react if we need to, if not, we just know what they're concerned about. When we throw news reports out about activities, maybe a function we're due, we definitely watch to see if it's catching on in electronic age, and that's important to us, because that actually makes staff happy to know that people are going to come, and that's really important. If there's traffic problems, we'll put an announcement out, engage public reaction, and it's such a neat tool. I first took office in 2009, we talked to five thousand people, thirty volunteers, it took nine months, and we repeated that account that we found, because I really believe you want to know what people are thinking about, therefore you make decisions, you map out your plans, you know you're answering what people want. It's not hard, but it's a lot of work, and Zen City has made that a lot easier. Resident engagement is.
And then one other one from a mayor in Dayton, Ohio. Well, that one's not working. But she had an example in hers where, basically, a water main break had happened, and they were able to, again, use Zen City to get that information out quickly, and let everybody know in real time what people were feeling about that, and how they could redirect traffic, and where they could put the information most quickly. So, sorry, we can't see that video, but we'll try to get that to you. So, for Dawson County as an overview, so there's a lot of departments, there's, you know, a lot of elected officials, other departments and agencies that we try to keep track of and see what's going on. And with Zen City, as Dawson County continues to grow, we need to understand the performance and communication of our county departments with respect to our residents. So Zen City would allow us to basically slice and dice this data by department, by projects, by districts, by neighborhoods, and this would allow us to keep a better pulse on the county and understand what our residents are most interested or concerned with, and we can do this using Zen City. We don't have to keep going out to all of the different platforms, that's just one person just can't go to that many platforms in one day. Okay. So again, with this, they do offer reports that we get, we can get daily reports, you get weekly reports, and monthly reports. And so with those, there's a topic-specific report, and this would be something similar to if we wanted to run it on like the Crystal Falls, if we wanted to see what the general consensus is from the community on that. This was, I don't know where this community is, but on the trail that they were doing. And you can see that they actually had eighty percent negative feedback, so it was not well received. But it actually starts breaking it down even further, and it tells them the words that are bolded, so it actually tells them what the citizens are most upset about, misuse of taxpayer money, that the council should have gotten more residents input, there was, they're concerned about the loss of parking. So these are things, again, that you don't necessarily know about, that they will break down for you. And again, this is not something that this artificial intelligence, this software is not just taking this and spitting out a report for us. We actually have a consultant that works full-time with us, and they actually get this information, they get the data, they take it, and they will analyze it, and they type out our reports, so they're analyzing it. So they will double-check it, they review it, they make sure that it actually makes sense as to what's coming back. Then, as far as the monthly report, again, it's just a lot more detailed, and it will just break it down by more of what's trending, it could be more of the which county departments are trending, it could be public works, it could be planning and development, and it just breaks it down by percentages, and again, it'll highlight more of what they're, what they are seeing that we're not. Okay, so the biggest part is Zen City allows us to become a pro-resident county. So this will allow us to incorporate feedback of those that cannot attend our meetings. And the biggest thing is, people can't necessarily attend, not unless they don't want to, they just can't, they're either working, they have kids, they just, it just doesn't work for their schedule. But that doesn't make their thoughts and opinions any less relevant than those that can attend, and so we should be able to find out what they are saying, we should be able to find out what their opinions are. And so by being able to get these reports and see what they're saying, that allows that silent majority to have a voice. We can present that, we can, you know, find a way to have that at these meetings.
But it's not, it's not saying Joe feels bad about this, it's taken it at a macro level.
Yes, yes. So it, yes, no, it will never tell us a name, it will never tell us an address, it never tells us anything personal, it just gives us a broad overview. And they are so much for residents being able to see what's going on, they have a resident section on their website, so residents can go see, there's a, you know, a thank you section on there, if residents have questions as to how they're using data or what they're doing with it. They welcome it, they want them to go see it, they want to call up and talk to Zen City directly, they welcome that, they are not trying to hide anything, they are not trying to misconstrue anything on the information that they're using, so they're very pro-resident on that.
One of the biggest examples I can think of this year that this would have been most beneficial was our first resident of this year, and that was Crystal Falls. As everyone knows, that was quite controversial, but what we didn't see in the public hearings was that silent majority that, because we received probably more phone calls about that in opposition and, you know, people that were for that being revitalizing that community, just because they were making phone calls and they didn't actually show up to the public hearings. So I believe if we were to see that in this type of data, it would have shown you that, you know, the people did not want a thousand septic tanks and a thousand homes and a thousand acres. and a thousand homes and a thousand acres being, being pretty much deserted. They'd much rather see that conservation-type neighborhood that we, that was approved by the board and that forty percent, you know, open space and conservation. And, you know, having that water reservoir there allowed that community and that golf course, which, how many times I talk to golfers about out there, that just rave about how beautiful that course is. They want to see that community survive out there. But that is the biggest example I have to think of this year that would directly be affected by, by Zen City and this, and this, this data. And the better data we have, the better decisions we can make. And that, that comes straight out of the planning department as it does for any department with the county. And we're supportive of this.
So again, privacy, they get to, you know, kind of drill down on that. They're very serious about their privacy. But they only collect, you know, public data or data that's owned by the city or county, never private or personal data. You know, personal data is automatically filtered out by the product. They do not share information between cities or residents. Even though they only aggregate public data, they still don't share it. And it's the city or county's decision on how to share that information. And they will support what our decision is on that. And again, they, they always anonymize the data that they collect, including the names and identities of the source, and they never save IPs. And I did ask her why they are even collecting IPs, the IP addresses of where people are. She said that is strictly when people check in on Facebook, if you check into a park, if you check into a restaurant, and that's all that is. But they don't save that information either, so. So in closing on Zen City, basically it just reinvents how counties can make decisions. They use artificial intelligence to analyze resident feedback and deliver actionable insights that help governments prioritize resources, track performances, performance more effectively, and perhaps most effective importantly, connect more deeply with their communities. Thank you. Any questions or...?
Questions for Laura or James?
A question. We have a program, I think it was called Three One One. And people would call in, they would give a problem, and there was somebody monitoring that. They would get back with them, and they would be able to update when the project is going to be happening. Isn't that something similar to what you're talking about?
I believe so, but I'm not sure...
Do we still have that program? Where is that? Who's doing that? I know Kathy Brooks worked very hard to get the license. We had to have a license to have that program. And I remember her, it had to be approved.
That's correct. I may have addressed that. And you're exactly right, that was basically a complaint-driven type of system that you could, a citizen could, could remote in and take a look at what the progress is on their issue. That process has not been active, I know, for years. It's been there, but it hasn't been active. It's very encumbersome. It's an encumbersome program. It takes a lot of staff time, it takes a lot of monitoring. And it's a good program if it's in use, but...
Well, I remember it being very helpful, and I got a lot of positive feedback from that. But I had forgotten about it until I read all of this information. And I thought, okay, where is this program? Because we went to a lot of trouble. I, I remember Kathy Brooks talking about it, so.
That was probably state-of-the-art at the time, if it was many years ago. Way to do that.
Kevin Tanner was involved in it. He was a big promoter of it.
Well, I think it goes back to what David just said, what you said yourself, basically, is Kathy Brooks was doing it. And Kathy Brooks will no longer hear.
Well, then that's when we have to be careful.
We downsized in government during the downturn, and some of the positions were let go. Hers was one of those. And I would imagine at that time...
She got those licenses, but there was another lady...
That time it went down.
Kathy, do you remember who was answering those calls?
No ma'am.
There was someone that was responding and keeping them. And it wasn't Kathy, but she got us that call.
It was somebody in Public Works, wasn't it? Some woman in Public Works.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I think that's what I'm hearing.
I'm scared either, I don't think she's no longer with us.
She's no longer. But I remember...
If I may, just a second. So we, we used both the Three One One and the planning department. It was also used in Public Works. What I recall is it wasn't getting used by the citizens. And if a complaint came in, it was an extra step in the process that staff had to input into a complaint-driven system. And then individual departments also had their own complaint-tracking systems. So there was extra work that was being done. And what we found was the citizens never called in to utilize that specific Three One One system. And to my knowledge, like our county managers, it hasn't been used certainly in Public Works in the last four or five years. But yes, it was, was tracked, and then Jill Jones may be who you're talking about.
That's who it was.
And Public Works, who was the administrative assistant at Public Works. She would track it both in our internal complaint-tracking system as well as input the exact same information into Three One One. The two didn't talk, so.
And that was specific to Public Works, that she was adding that tracking that.
Specific for Public Works, not county-wide, just for what involved...
But I mean, you still have that, if a citizen has a problem, they're going to pick up the phone and call, whether they dial Three One One or dial the number to the department that they're engaging in, I would think. I mean, they still have that ability to do. We haven't taken that away by doing away with Three One One, it's just maybe the, the one direct number. This to me seems that's, you still have to have, that's a critical thing. You gotta have the direct feedback from citizens. But this seems to be a macro level, or that's a micro. You're hearing one-on-one individual complaints. Whereas at a macro level, you don't necessarily want to care who the person's saying it, but you want to get a general pulse of the community and what the feeling is around a particular topic for, because it's not identifying somebody. That's the differences that I'm, but you're still, I mean, Julie, you're still right. You still have to promote. We might do a better job of promoting those numbers for people to call and make it more efficient.
Yeah, I think you've done a good job of that. One other question. Facebook, we have a Facebook account.
We do.
Isn't there an algorithm that you can get to go along with that, that would update that? Maybe that may be an IT question, I don't know.
Updated in terms of...
So that you could monitor some of this stuff?
Not that I'm aware of.
I know that there are several other monitoring tools.
People drive persons.
Yeah, like persons, they're not looking at it. But yeah, one, it takes a person sitting there that actually has, has to have the time to know exactly what to search for, because a lot of those things are keyword searches. So we would have to search for, all right, that event that's happening at that park, we want to know how that, that's going on. And we would only get those certain pages.
It would only be Facebook-driven, it would only be on Facebook. So that wouldn't be taking any other social media platform into consideration. It would not take any news media platform into consideration either. So Dawson County News, Page AC, the Atlanta Business Chronicle. Zen City takes all of that, includes all of that data.
To me, this is, this is more, and I think Commissioner Posse pointed it out very well, that it's called a city thing, but we have three major entities of government functions within our geographic area, which is the county, the city, and the schools. Do we engage with any of those other entities to see if they would participate? Because, you know, there, there could be feedback all over the board. And if you get feedback that's pertinent to a city issue or, or, you know, an idea, or the same thing with the school system, so.
I have not, but I will.
Okay. And we haven't talked about cost, is there any...
Eighteen thousand a year.
Eighteen thousand a year.
Come on in.
I'm assuming that Mr. Higley is wanting me to let you know that they're doing a waiver for a ten thousand dollar setup cost, which is what normally is charged. They're also doing a twenty-five percent discount of six thousand five hundred for the first year. And that won't have to go on, it will always be eighteen thousand every year. So other cities have paid much more money for this, for the exact same thing. They're trying to get these new cities involved in Georgia. So they've offered this to Savannah, to Johns Creek, who's only had it two weeks now, to Peachtree Corners, and they've all paying the same price with that ten thousand dollars waived in on setup fee. And anybody who knows technology, they're always have setup fee in the beginning, even if you're doing printing on t-shirts or anything such as like logos and all that. There's always setup fees, they're waiving ten thousand automatically. And then if we can get into this contract this year in 2019, they're waiving another twenty-five percent, which is six thousand five hundred, which comes today eighteen thousand. And I believe that's what they're doing for this. And just my, just my opinion about this, I was in public relations for several years with State Patrol and corrections. We paid a company to go out and look for newspaper articles, either about State Patrol, about some of the correction officers, the institutions, that sort of thing. This is just a new way of paying somebody to receive articles that's printed all over the country. And this is just the new technology. Instead of paying somebody to literally read all these papers, clip it out and email it to you. Or at the time, it used to have them more. And that's just kind of what, we thought about it when I sat in on the meeting.
What is the cost based upon? How did they arrive at eighteen thousand? You know what Savannah pays, or maybe a lot of those local laws.
It's not due to, from what I understand, it's not due to how big your city or your county is. It's just that that's their cost for it. They're paying that individual, as Laura said, to be our advocate and find this information. And that's what they're paying, which we know it would be very hard to bring in a new employee to assist Laura in looking at this news media for eighteen thousand a year. So it's just my personal opinion as your purchasing manager.
Of course, this, okay, where this gets started.
They're based in Delaware, Delaware. And they've already set these, their W-9 has already been verified with the IRS, the phone-in orders. And because they do not actually come to our city, which we don't think, we're verifying that now, they don't even need to have a certificate of existence through the Secretary of State's office. That's only if they're going to be stepping and doing work here. If they're foreign, it's not necessarily meaning country, it just means not a Georgia business. And that's not even necessary.
And I thought I heard you say they've been around two years, and then I thought I heard it started in 2015. That's not two years.
They've been at the US for two years.
Oh, well, where have they been?
So they just started as an international company. So they are currently in Israel. And so they, I don't know if they, I don't believe they started in Israel, but they do have offices in Israel. But they've been at the US for two years, but they, the company itself was founded in 2015.
Have we reached out to other companies to see who else is doing this back then? To give hints?
There is not. They actually have a sole source. We do have their sole source letter. So, but we did, I did do some research to see if there is anybody. And I believe Melissa also did some research, and we have not come up with anybody that does this exact same thing.
The only companies that even came close to doing this would be for dating services.
For what?
Dating services. And they're the ones who use the app.
Oh, they skip dating.
And, and that is, that's the truth, they're the only ones out there now that have those advantages. Our, 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 this type of information to get over one platform.
And then when this information comes in, who is it going to go to? And how are they going to get it out?
So the information would actually come to me, and it would be in the reports that we receive. And that's something that we would need to figure out how we want to work with it. That would be something that I would work with Mr. Headley on. And, you know, as we start seeing trends, as you see something that we really need to jump on and get in front of, I think that's something as a county that we would figure out our strategy and how we would handle that. You know, similar to Savannah, if we had something where we could get together with citizens and either, you know, bring it together to a mediation of sorts, I think it's on a case-by-case basis on what we would do with that information. But it would certainly come in as a report and be available in that situation.
If you get complaints about District Two or Thirty or Four, not about One. But would, would we know about it? If they're on that list and about, they don't know this and they don't know that, and what are they doing?
I think if it's a strong enough complaint and it comes through, yes, you would.
You'll tell us, won't you?
Yes, ma'am, it would be on the report.
Well, and you know, to, this is all brand-new information, with brand-new technology. Well, not brand-new, but it's there, a lot of other companies use the same type of stuff. But from my perspective, the role that we're in, information is critical. And if there are issues out there, I mean, we, we have fifty people here tonight, but we represent twenty-five thousand. And so the more feedback that I can have, they're not all going to come tonight. They're not all going to pick up the phone and call me. But the more feedback at a macro level that I can have, the better, I'm in a position to, to make a better decision that reflects the feedback of the citizenry that we represent.
Absolutely.
Good or bad, I mean, and that's on every, everything that we deal with. And to, to Commissioner Posse's point, if, you know, if we're doing something wrong, then there should be a high-level macro feedback. It might not be just one or two people, it might be twenty thousand people who are saying, you don't know what you're doing, or, or this doesn't need to happen. But we typically, even with contentious zonings, we hear from, you know, ten, fifteen, fifty people max, and we represent twenty-five thousand. So the more information that, that I think that we can have is, is critical and helps us make a better decision, no matter what it is. The biggest concern, I think, that people will have is intrusion into privacy. And I think, and that's, and that's generic across all technology platforms. And I would just want to make sure that we're not getting into a relationship with a company that is mining data that's not already public. I mean, if somebody comes and speaks here, it's public. If somebody goes on Twitter or Facebook and types in something, it's public. I think I'm comfortable with that. They agree to put that statement or that sentiment out there, then that's public. And that's information that we can use to help at a macro level make a better decision. But I'm not interested in a company that's going in and saying, X, Y, Z doesn't like to suit you more tonight.
Correct. And they don't do that. Now, one important note, though, if a page is private, if an account is a private account, they will not, they don't have access to that. So it's only public pages. So, you know, I think everybody is familiar with a lot of the public forums that we have for Dawson County. And you're probably familiar with a lot of the threads that will start on one topic. But then that thread may change into a whole nother topic down the, way down the page. This would actually help bring those all together. And it would actually look at all the, the topics. The thing that I like most about it is we are not providing a list of keywords. We are not providing a list of projects that we have going on, a list of developers. We don't provide anything. So this is all information that is coming provided by the citizens and what they are saying. And so that, to me, just makes it that much more valuable in that we didn't ask them to look for anything specific. It is what the citizens are saying.
Right. We don't narrow the focus of what's, good, the bad, and the ugly.
All of it.
So as far as IT, what are any concerns on IT before? Mr. Todd?
Well, it's early in the States for us, this is a new experience for us, so. We don't really have a comment on it right now, but we would definitely, if y'all moving forward, be looking into it to see security issues, hacking issues, the same things as everything else. We'd like to get some verification on that, if y'all decide to move forward with it.
I believe it's a cloud-based program, so, but there would still be a lot of security to worry about.
And they wouldn't need any access to our, our servers or our data to provide us this information. So as far as the security risk, I would imagine it would be very low, but we'll make sure we are, you know...
Talk to the county that's taking care of our stuff now.
I'd like to see you reach out to city and schools and see if we can all go in together as a collaborative effort and just to share the cost and the idea.
Other questions? Thank you for your work. Anything that allows us to know the thoughts of our citizens is something we definitely want to look at. So thank you for your hard work. Next up, we have presentation of board appointments. It's the Board of Tax Assessors. This is a appointment from January 2020 through December 2024.
This is a deployment from January 2020 through December 2024. We've had two applications. Tom Camp, who currently serves in that role, Tom's been serving since about April of this year. And then Mr. Tim Goodyear, you have both of their resumes for you to look at to make a decision at our next meeting. Any questions in reference to the two resumes that you had?
I would just like for the board to think about, we've just got through spending, I don't know how much, ninety thousand dollars to send Mr. Tom Camp to school in April, I think probably around. Please address that. How much?
We sent Mr. Camp to school and it cost us approximately $700 to do that in the month of June to get the certification.
And he is willing to serve another time? Okay, and I would just ask the board to please consider, we've already educated one, and I'd love for new people to come forward and maybe put Tim Goodyear on a waiting list if something comes up. He could certainly be interviewed, and I would like the board to consider that.
And now, Tom Camp is just a full-fledged member of the board, voting rights and all that.
Yes, ma'am.
So we hate to start over with that, or I would.
I would too.
Mr. Camp will need to attend an additional class, which is a requirement for the first two years, but he has had his train down and is certified to-
He's voted on that, yeah. And has he expressed a desire to stay on or to leave or?
He has expressed a desire to stay on, yes, ma'am. Mr. Camp was here earlier, making a family emergency and had to leave.
But he's willing to serve.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have another comment?
May I speak to this student?
Yes, sir.
I'm Sam Guthrie, Chairman of the Board of Assessor. Tom has done a model's job for us. He's had two courses, as you pointed out already. And I'm sure Mr. Goodyear could be a good candidate. And let me just throw this out to you. My term expires at the end of 2020, a year from now. I'll be eighty-eight. I don't plan to ask for extension.
You mean it's on a term limit, some of your stuff?
I may expire before my term, so anyway. Mr. Goodyear, well, to have this forty hours before he could be quote effective from a voting standpoint. And he'll, the class is not going to be available, forty-hour class is not going to be available until mid-year. So I want you to put that in your consideration and let's keep Tom on board if we can.
Would this Goodyear guy be able to attend training? You know what happened with Lisa Carter? You know, she, I mean, she was very good, but she could get off from work to attend her training. So you've got to have somebody that can attend this training. Because you cannot miss it. You cannot keep putting it off and putting it off. So I wonder if this guy, I know Tom can.
Yeah.
But I don't know, I don't know this other guy. I don't know if he can or not. But that's something, and you have got to do that. You may not comply, so you got DOR, you got people hours. So, but people need to consider that when they apply, that they've got to be gone.
Mr. Guthrie brought up a good point. Should we get to the point where, because you've got a delay for getting trained, should we get to the point where we're anticipating and taking a proactive approach when somebody's getting to the point where they may not want to continue? That we could have somebody trained up, ready to go to fill a vacant seat?
I don't know if you could do that, I don't know. Can you do that, Elaine?
I think that would be a question for the county attorney to answer first.
Yeah.
He just brought the good point, because you've got a delay factor there to get trained once you're in there.
Department's ready.
But you've got, when you first get in there, you've got, what, six months?
A hundred and eighty days of naval appointment to attend your first forty-hour class and pass the test.
Yeah. Yeah, and you do have to pass the test. Yeah, you don't just sit there and say, woo, what time is it? I can't wait to leave.
Tom has passed that test.
Yeah, well, it's not just one. It's, I mean, even when you go, you've got to stay awake, so.
Thank you, Mr. Guthrie. Do you have a response?
I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't know the answer to the question, certainly willing to look at it for you and get back to you on it.
Thank you. And that might be for any board that requires a training. If we, you know, if you know somebody, like Mr. Guthrie said, I'm not going to continue, that would help. The tax assessor board, whoever to be ready to roll day one, be educated, so not on-the-job training day one. So I guess the question would be, will the Department of Revenue allow someone to be trained in way before they're-
That's right.
Yeah, before they're actually, before they're- A lot of these questions would have to find out. Okay. Anyway, as we've said in the past, I'll present to you anybody who puts in, and that's the reason you see two names. So that you have, always have a choice of people who are willing to serve.
So he'll stay on file, I mean, we'll have his application.
All right. Any other questions in reference to those two applications? All right, next up, we have a presentation of the 2020 Board of Commissioners Vice Chair appointment. Each year, we appoint a vice chair to serve as the chair in my absence. I'm going to make a recommendation to you that at the next voting session that we appoint Commissioner Gaines. I think everyone and the rest of you have had the opportunity to serve as vice chair. And I would recommend Commissioner Gaines to you at that particular time. And I haven't asked him if he's willing to, but I'm just going to recommend.
First time I heard that.
You'll have a chance in the next meeting. All right.
Yeah, you better get engaged.
And he's right, I haven't spoken to him, but I'm just making a question.
And you want to come in the resume?
I can give you your resume. All right, next up, county manager report.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. I have a short report for you tonight. Before we get started on it, I did want to introduce Corinne Hoeks, who's our receptionist and records management caretaker. She's worked in the private sector and has now joined us and would like to have her stand up for just a second. She plays a career as-
You need to come to the front, that's all we can say.
There's always a speech for the first.
Yeah. Now, tell me what her job is.
So, as you know, Corinne was a receptionist at Rock Creek. And she was cross-training and had been taking on some of the extra duties there at Fleet to help Fleet out in the administration side. And then when the board approved that position, she applied for it and took it over. So we looked at what, ways to look at the reception position and what were some of the issues with that. And of course, as you know, there's some downtime there that when phones aren't ringing and there, you know, stuff along those lines, that there may be some other things that they can do to assist in that. And it also helps to stimulate that individual that they're not just sitting there waiting for thunder. So looking at that, one of the issues that we've had has been our records management side of things. And so got with HR, we kind of revised a little bit of that to assist some of the department heads in some of their record filings, that kind of thing, to help out. It's difficult to do that at the desk, you know, so you can pull them away from it at the hours of the day. And one of the issues with this position is that, you know, it does encumber the other staff when somebody's not there and this allows that person to be able to do other things as well. So Corinne has a background in that, in recordskeeping. Has worked, like I said, in the private sector and are really looking forward to having her work with us and really much forward in that area and looking at that position.
Vandermees. C-O-R-I-N-N-E. You've got it right.
And how do you pronounce it?
Corinne.
Corinne.
Most people want to pronounce it Corinne, but it's Corinne.
And last name was what?
Hoeks. Nothing easy about it.
H-O, like whole chest.
It looks like-
That's nice. And pronounce it how?
Hoeks.
Hoeks.
A jerk.
Yes. If you pronounce the C-H like a K, that makes it easier. That's right? Yeah. Okay. All right, I'm done.
Mine is Gaines. We welcome you.
Yeah, when did you start? When did you start?
I started on the twenty-eighth of October.
We actually had it scheduled for the last work session to, we had to meet with the boards. But the meeting was running a little late that night, and so we just had to, we had another meeting. And we didn't get it at this meeting.
All righty.
Welcome aboard.
She looks sane now, but she won't long.
And if you recall, I told you all last month about the Finance Department's evening, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And if you just take a minute, we've got something on screen we'll show you of that award being provided.
I'm Chris Moore, GFO Detective Director. It is my honor to announce that Dawson County, Georgia, has received its Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. The purpose of this award program is to encourage and assist governments to prepare comprehensive and understandable budget documents to improve transparency and trust in government. To earn the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, Dawson County met demanding program criteria. Such a record reflects the professionalism, commitment, and dedication of your organization. This is the fifth time that Dawson County has won this award. Program reviewers praised many sections of the budget. Nice job. We hope that this award to Dawson County will serve as an example and encourage others to strive for the same high standards in their own budget documents. Therefore, it's my privilege on behalf of the Government Finance Officers Association to present to Dawson County this Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Congratulations.
Thank you, Vicki and Herd, and Hard Art Work and that other staff. Also, Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec December's Epic Day will be held from ten a.m. noon Thursday, December the nineteenth, at Rock Creek Park. This will be a Christmas party with our friends, and we will have special food and presents for clients, caregivers, and volunteers. This program in itself, you may recall, was also staff-generated. Matt, his team has put that together, and it's been an extremely successful program and a real, self-rewarding one as well. Also, I'd like to remind you that the Senior Center will have its tenth annual art show. Art by the Young of Heart will be held from ten a.m. noon this Saturday, December the seventh, at the Senior Center. Anything to add to that?
No, hope you can come.
And that concludes our report. We also have Breakfast with Santa.
That is this Saturday. It sure is. I forgot to mention that. I apologize. Breakfast with Santa, this Saturday. Please come out and see Santa and have a biscuit. We'd love to have you.
Where is it?
At the, it's Rock Creek Rec Center, yes.
What time was it?
Uh, eight to eleven. Thank you.
See, I don't miss out on Santa.
No, I'll be at the end.
I thought it was the breakfast that you were- Could be.
Thank you, Chairman. Pleasure.
Questions for the county manager? We have any report from our county attorney?
Just a pleasure to be here, but I have nothing to report. And I also, if, since we're on my portion, I don't have anything for executive session either.
All right. We'll thank everybody for their attendance. We will have our voting session at six o'clock. We welcome you back for that. And that's it. Then we stand this adjourned. Thank you.